This time we have a discussion of the general to the overall importance. We can start in the corner, Mr. Shadie, to give the questions.
Thank you, Your Honor. The contingency part, so just put this to the county director. It says operating trends from animal control, 266,000 dollars. Can you explain that? Does that already earmark to the animal control?
Yeah, that's not a new line item. You do that every year in the transfer to support the animal control fund.
That's from the...
It really is, when it's in contingency. That just, it's sunrise under contingency, but if you look at the detail of the budget, you'll see it separated as an animal control.
Further, Mr. Shadie.
Thank you, Your Honor. Continue to introduce Sainte-Claire. First, publicly, I'd like to thank Mr. Sainte-Claire for all the effort that he's put into supplying me with all of the extra questions that I've asked about the entire budget and spending time with me to open these items. Thank you very much for that. In looking through this budget, and the mayor made a comment earlier, it hasn't fallen on deaf ears. I'm not sure that it applies to what I want to try to do here, but if it does, I apologize to the honor. At any rate, when I looked at the vacant budget-funded items, the vacant positions, with benefits and everything included, it's about $3.2 million. And the thought occurred to me that if we could fund all of those positions at half, we'll be happy to happen. Because I don't think July 3rd, if it comes online, that may happen, but I don't think that's happening.
What's going on? We got like 15 second, I heard no one budgeted actually, 15 second names?
Thank you, proceed, Mr. Shadie. Thank you. So that would take 1.6 million dollars out of the budget. And with the numbers that you and I have worked out through the last few months, just to be able to ballpark and put things into perspective, if you use the number of $800,000, moving the mill rate, 10th of the mill, that comes out to about $10 per 100,000 dollars of net asset, excuse me, net assessment, not someone's property. So we have 1.6 million, that would be $20 for 100,000. So on a house like mine, 200,000 dollars, it would save our family 40 bucks a year. Now, it doesn't sound like a big profit, but it's still 40 bucks a year. And when I, the mayor has usually run an unsustainable path, and I like that term, because my house is on an unsustainable path, that if I project out seven years, I'll be paying maybe sooner, $104 a week for taxes on my house. And if you were to walk up to our house and say, "If you look at all these numbers, then that all makes sense." If you look at the house, you go, "I understand." So that's kind of what's driving it. So what I would then suggest, and this is going back to mayor time, is if we could take, as those positions come online, if we could fund them out of the fund balance. And let's just go on the premise that at the end of the year, not everything is filled. We just backfill that money back, we just pass that back into the fund balance, shore that back up. And my thought would be, the following year, based upon what the fund balance would have been at the end of 2012, 2013, we make that adjustment in the taxes. Now, this makes it sound like a Rob Peter, the ball kind of thing, but you don't know what's going to come online in the next four years. So that's kind of where I'm thinking at this.
Okay.
So we have, I hope everybody followed that first. I want to say a good idea, a good idea. We currently do that. If you look at the personnel salary savings line, that's exactly what it does. It takes those funded positions and offsets those funded positions with a negative. All right? So it reduces that budget, and then if you look at employee service benefit, it partially funds it. Now, those unbudgeted positions, those are completely struck out of the budget. That's a $2.5 million savings in total between salaries and benefits. Those positions are not going to be filled. The other ones that we talked about, those other 36 positions, those are only partially funded, not fully funded, but partially funded, because we do offset them with the personnel salary savings. We didn't really get into that too much this afternoon, but that's exactly what that does. It does exactly what you're talking about there, because we recognize the fact that those positions are not going to be filled on day one. So this is the part that I missed. Are we, if I look at the budget of $220 million, are there $3.2 million in that 220? If you add up all those personnel salary savings lines, you probably reduce it by maybe a $1.5 million. Now, keep in mind, much of that is, we don't do a significant amount of reduction in police and fire, because we don't want to leave ourselves short.
It's a policy decision that I made.
It's a public safety decision. And I, you know, fully am, my board is that, and I fully understand that, and I fully understand the feat of your three years about not trying to touch the fund balance because it looks good when they credit you a concept. So, you know, I'm up to speed on all of that, but it's still leaving me a little uncertain about, I mean, if I look at a budget that says, "We want to tax you at $220 million," and you say, "Well, we're not taxing you at $220 million, we're taxing you at $218.5 million." So I'm confused with that. I would just ask you to open up your budget, okay? You know, police, for example. And you'll see the regular salary line, and underneath that, you'll see a personnel salary savings offset, which is a negative number. So you really have to look at the sum of the two to understand, you know, that is, actually that's personnel salary savings is a reduction on your budget.
So if you, let me put this way, Mr. Shadie, if you didn't do that, and you take the assumption everybody's going to be hired by July 1st, you would be taxed at $221.5 million. That's how we got to 220 was by taking that deduction.
It's summary, we do not fund our positions, all the vacant positions that we intend to fill, we do not fully fund.
We know we won't hire everybody. So we take an assumption of the budget, that's why. If we were to do it straight and say, "Okay, every person in here is completely funded, has insurance, everything else," you'd be $221.5.
We started that, you know, when the economy started getting difficult, we started that three years ago.
It was not always a problem.
Keep the tax rates down.
So, Your Honor, you're both in the right terms. Thank you. Further discussion? Further discussion? Mr. Shadie.
Thank you, Your Honor. Basically saying that what Councilman DeRro was getting at was something that makes sense and has not always been done, but is being done, I just want to, I think it's, I understand this correctly, this will be on page, for example, engineering department proposed operating budget, I'm picking 198, the line item that says personnel salary savings, and there's 70K and $1. That's what you're referring to, and so that $70,001 is not included in the overall budget. That is a reduction in the total amount of expenditures that have been granted to us. And just to be clear, the $3.2 million that Councilman DeRro spoke about fund those 34 positions or 29 whatever, 36 positions? You're saying that now that personnel salary savings...
That's absent from that number, and that's what we really didn't get into in our conversation. So that was, as we're talking about it, we didn't really get into that discussion this afternoon.
What I just talked about, because I wrote down here, it said probably $1.5 million is not in the budget because of this personal salary savings. And that's based on the scenario that Mr. Shadie was on. People understand that?
I have it. Seeing that, Mr. Shadie, the second time.
Fine, never again. Following on with what Mr. DeRro said, and understanding that obviously it's difficult funding, and it's difficult for council members here with full-time jobs or part-time jobs and many other things going on in their life to, I have another question, yeah, it's open. It's especially difficult in tough economic times. It's easier for us when we have a lot of revenue coming in, when our investments are doing well and permits are doing well. We have finite amount of resources, and we prioritize education, public safety, infrastructure, and this list. In past years, I've expressed my concern with certain funding going to private or quasi-private public entities, certain entities within our city, regional entities, also concerned with both union and non-unionized races. And those have always been popular positions to take, and some meetings have had to me that, you know, "Why are you doing this to us?" But while not popular, all the elected officials up here, the mayor and others, have an obligation to do what we each feel is best for our city. And setting policy and force of action going forward, you know, there are obviously going to be times as we do disagree and argue, and some people want society to shut off, and I want other people to be quiet, but we don't. We listen, we debate, we disagree and debate, and that's not bad. It's really in the heart of a democracy, and I apologize if I get too philosophical on a bit here, but I think what's important here is being able to ask these questions, go through a budget, debate and disagree, and then leave a dice, leave a meeting, understanding that we're all doing our best even though we may have reasonable disagreements on how to get there. All that being said, in the comments that I made in the Government One Committee, I asked some questions about races or media adjustments. When I compared this year's current budget, current salaries with non-unionized employees after or during some discussion or statements at a public hearing, with the proposed budget, they look the same. I then went back to the online proposal, Sainte-Claire, and compared those salaries to last year's approved budget. And they were different. There was some discussion in that, and the mayor explained that all very well in the Government One Committee, how the budget adjustments were made within existing corporations and savings, and I apologize for misrepresenting your words. But what I stated at the meeting was, I still had a concern with voting for, in this budget for races, that I would not have voted for in last year's way. I can't speak for others as to whether they feel the same way. And I know it's not a large amount of money, and I know some people may be upset, but given how tight things are and with the potential for having to come up with other dollars possibly down the road for certain contingencies, I just can't support those current raises at this time. The people deserve it, this is what I told the teachers, who said, "I have three degrees, you don't think I deserve the salary?" I'm not saying you don't deserve it, because there's a finite amount of money in order to provide these salaries. So with that, I would move to defund the non-union races, with the exception, with the exception of any increases in salary line items related to the change of classification, such as the formance of the change of classification, or because somebody who has hired in the year, that salary line item may have been lower and needs to be higher this year because it will pay throughout the entire year.
It was made a motion to take away the raises for the non-union employees. Is there a second to that motion?
One second.
Seconded, as made by Mr. DeRro. Is there a discussion? Mr. DeRro? May Mr. DeRro? Yes, you do. I'd like to show that Mr. Curran, for this particular case, is not actually, he should be, sorry, Mr. Curran, excuse me.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the envelope, I'll subscribe to my call to Mr. Shadie, but I certainly could not ever support the amendment that is being proposed currently, defund the non-union employees. And I can all base that on several factors, and I'd like to ask Mr. Sainte-Claire, he can verify some of my information from the meeting. Sainte-Claire, the raises total, many year raises total for the non-union employees, if I'm not mistaken, was in the area of about $80,000?
That's correct.
And when was the, how long did those employees, non-union, go without raises?
2009, 10. That was the last, actually just before that, eight, nine, was the last fiscal year that the non-union had the raises. So I recently wanted to expand on that, if you would, the comparison between the raises, all the raises across the board, across the city, between different classes in the union and union. And since that time, since 2010, because that was the area of question, and the non-union got a raise this year, well, that amounted to $80,000. During that same period of time, the non-union got raises up to $2.5 million, but $2.5 million. And, you know, they got three raises during that time, and the non-union got one raise. The union got 7.5 percent, and the non-union got 2.75 percent.
That was, that was for six months ago.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you, Sainte-Claire. I'd like to just follow, Mrs. Lasker Warner.
Lasker Warner, thank you. One of my concerns, and I wondered if you could verify it, how long do employees stay, non-union employees generally stay in employment when we start not receiving raises here every year? Do we have a risk or run a risk of losing employees by not offering raises if other places are being more competitive, of course?
If other places are being more competitive, yes. Looking at the economy, we have to look to see if that's true or not.
And do we occasionally have people come in and look at our non-union employees for their salaries comparable to other towns, municipalities, our size and budget size, and say, "Hey, you're on track, or you're not on track?"
Yes.
You know, like, there, thank you, I'm sure there would be, that we just wind up dropping backwards so far that eventually someone could come in and say, "Look, you're not competitive, and you're not going to be able to stay competitive, and you're going to lose good people." And I like our non-union staff, I think that they do a tremendous job for a fair amount of pay, but I think there are some adjustments that could be made to that. And I think a lot of them do above and beyond, and I could start naming them, and I'm looking at very, a lot of them right here in this room tonight, and, you know, I wouldn't want to lose you, because I know that your time and your efforts go way beyond what you get paid for. And there's a dedication to the city that comes with that, and I'm happy that you got them to make the raise, I'm glad that the mayor, Your Honor, can you tell me, have you managed to sweep that up, by the way?
Well, you know, thank you, I'm going to give you the hammer, just in case there. I appreciate you asking that question. What had happened is that I think some of the non-union folks back there could attest to this, they went 40 years without raises. At the same time, at the same time, most people on this die is voted for union contracts that gave raises. I just brought three contracts in front of you, and it all went through unanimously. And let me tell you what that means, next year, these folks aren't getting a raise. But your union counterparts are, you approved $688,000 in raises for your union folks. And the quickest way you're going to turn non-union people into union people is keep waiting four years every time that they do an increase. So what did I do? I went back to them, I met with my management advisory team, and I said, "Look, if you guys want raises, you got to find the money. Okay, I'm going to just find $80,000, you're going to find me significant savings for me to fund the raises." And they did that. They came back in with several hundred thousand dollars worth of savings out of the current year budget. So I want them to be clear to our taxpayers that they won't have to pay additional raises. What I find our high care is that we're having a discussion about that, when we just sailed three contracts through, everybody said, "No problem." We had a teacher's contract that didn't even come up here for a vote, everybody voted not to take no action. $1.4 million in raises. I'm not even saying the teachers shouldn't get, I'm a teacher, so I'd never go back there, I won't get raised, oh, I'm just kidding. But all sincerity, nobody said anything, it was okay. And I think there's a real disparity in equity in how we treat people, and we have to be very careful of that. You're just asking for a lawsuit. That doesn't mean everybody should get a raise all the time. I don't believe municipal plan means you get a raise no matter what. And I have to say that in the past, I based raises on merit, on the kind of job that the individual was doing. They didn't like that system, and I liked that system. It's worked well here for the last 11 years. But I understand frustrations and concerns, and I'm concerned about the escalating cost of government work, too. Our council we have, as a council, as a mayor, is that we live in the bluest of blue states. There's a rule in state statute for every single thing we do. The contracts you approve, that'll go into effect if you approve, and I would vote for them, too. Because if you go to arbitration, we're going to lose those arbitration, and we're going to have to pay more raises. So I think that's part of a bigger issue that we really can't necessarily solve right here, but I think that what we did for the non-union people was fair, it was equitable. And again, we can program raises for next year. However, if they come back with a million dollars worth of raises, I mean, a million dollars worth of savings, because they've come up with some magical way of doing things, then we can certainly look at that. Mr. DeRro?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's not a whole lot of can add to what you've already said, except we're dealing with a $220 million budget, I would be more than happy to listen to a plan to save a few million dollars on this budget without running a risk of pushing people into an organized labor situation, which I know in the past is a conspiracy. And certainly, the non-union people can do as they wish, I'm not saying I would prevent that from happening, but certainly in the overall scope of things, to even vote no against a budget of this magnitude on the basis of an $80,000 raise, it just doesn't make sense to me. It's, I would be happier to listen to oratures on, which would have taken place perhaps in committee or in private meetings with the finance director, that would set out to reduce the budget a meaningful amount, not something that is tertiary. We approve grants here, and we fund those grants right and left with amounts of hundreds of thousands of dollars. Here, basically, we're talking about the country. And I just don't see where anybody could vote against an overall budget on the basis of $80,000.
Thank you, Mr. Shadie. We are on the event, we're not on the main motion, so most of the questions are second and second. Second, Mr. Nagashet. All in favor of moving the question, signify by saying aye. Opposition, raise your hand. So it will be Mr. Shadie, Mr. DeRro, Mr. Perkins, and Mr. DeRro. At this time, we're on to the amendment of defunding the raises. All in favor of defunding the raises, the 19 staff, signify by saying aye. All in favor, okay. All, signify by saying aye. Okay, well, the ayes, raise your hands. Okay, then, Mr. DeRro, Mr. Shadie, Mr. Perkins, Mr. DeRro, Mr. Shadie. Motion fails, we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion? Mr. Shadie, you've had it before twice. Any other discussion, Mr. DeRro?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we move the question, I think everybody tends to be in time, either in committee or on the floor here, to discuss the main motion.
Motion made, seconded by Mr. Nagashet. All in favor of moving the question, signify by saying aye. Negative, raise your hand. May Mrs. T, Mr. Skaz, Mr. DeRro, Mr. DeRro. Mr. Curran, you're back on the floor, and you're going on moving the question, Mr. Curran?
No.
Okay. Mr. Curran's in the negative. Let's see here. Mr. DeRro, again, Mrs. T, Mr. Skaz, Mr. DeRro, Mr. Shadie, Mr. Perkins, Mr. DeRro, and Mr. Shadie. And this is Mr. Curran, and this is... Motion passes 11, 9. This time, we're on the main motion. All in favor, aye, 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 please, signify by saying aye. And ayes, raise your hands, please. Okay, then, Mr. DeRro, Mr. Shadie, Mr. Perkins, Mr. DeRro, and Mr. Shadie.
I have 13 ordinance, an ordinance appropriating $3 million for public improvements in the 2012, 2013 capital budget, and authorizing the issuance of $3 million bonds in the city to meet set appropriations impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, with pleasure, counsel, Mr. DeRro.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to receive the communication, improvement ordinance appropriating $3 million for public improvement projects in the 2012, 2013 capital budget, and authorizing the issuance of $3 million bonds of the city to meet set appropriation impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
Second, Mr. Nagashet. Discussion related, I am 13. Mr. Shadie.
I'd like to make a motion that we move to split the question.
Second. Motion made to divide the question, in what way, Mr. Shadie?
If you want. If you have four motions at each time.
Yeah, we're on, you can say it. So you're suggesting we both, ways in the highway department? Yeah, quick, there's one item, AV Green's Road, that's two, city buildings with repairs, three, control service, three, a facility, there's that's four. Second, is that your motion? And those are second, that's your motion. Second by Mr. Perkins. Discussion about dividing the question. All those in favor of dividing the question, why don't you raise your hands? Mr. DeRro, Mr. Perkins, and...
I'm sorry, Mr. Perkins.
I have 13 ordinance, an ordinance appropriating $3 million for public improvements in the 2012, 2013 capital budget, and authorizing the issuance of $3 million bonds in the city to meet set appropriations impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, with pleasure, counsel. Mr. Napp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to receive the communication, improvement ordinance appropriating $3 million for public improvement projects in the 2012, 2013 capital budget, and authorizing the issuance of $3 million bonds of the city to meet set appropriation impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
Second, Mr. Nagashet. Discussion related to item 13. Mr. Shadisi.
I'd like to make a motion that we move to split the question.
Second. Motion made to divide the question. In what way, Mr. Shadisi?
If you want. If you have four motions at each time. Yeah, we're all on each one, so.
So you're suggesting we both, ways in the highway department? Yeah, quick bit. There's one item, paving green is road, two, city buildings with repairs, three, control service, three, a facility with repairs, and that's four. Second, the second motion. Second, by Mr. Perkins. Discussion about dividing the question. All those in favor of dividing the question, why don't you raise your hands? Mr. Tello, Mr. Shadisi, Mr. Perkins, and Mr. Sadi. Motion fails. This time, we're back to the main motion discussion. Mr. Perkins.
Thank you. I've been on record a couple times before stating my displeasure with using long-term funding to pay for equipment, these cars, fire trucks, other types of vehicles, long term, and also having to... I think they should be in a department's budget, and also using a bond to finance those things. I would, you know, break folks up, but I know what kind of response I'd get. Probably hear that some of the equipment that's being used now is probably older than me, which that could be the case, but it's not that old. And also, I'd also probably hear that, for example, a get out home sold to me by a real estate agent, 30 years I go back to her, 20 years I go back, I say, my house fell out. She said, yeah, but you got a really great rate. All right, same thing here. The equipment that we're buying really doesn't last as long as the amount of funding, so I think that's why it's a good idea to have broken some of these items out. But I do know that, you know, a lot is high weight, but it is important, not very important, but really should have been broken out. In addition to that, I would say...
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Further discussion related to these...
Thank you, Your Honor. So in a public hearing, the meeting mentioned of the child, the child's authority, ownership of that residence, can the corporation counsel give us the actual owner of that building?
Ownership of authority properties in the city.
So the residence on the city property, it's on the... It's on state property.
It's not West Coast property.
State property. So the state owns the property, but we own the asset of the residence.
We own the assets. Including any or half of the property. Any other discussion? Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Your Honor. To the chair, to my instructor. Right here. Where do we stand with bond right now with our city?
In which way? Where do we stand as far as...
Where do we look at as far as our bonds, not with our...
I can't please? Where do we stand as far as our bonded indebtedness, Mr. Sadi?
Well, our rating is just about as high as you get. It's AAA, we'll go off our bond, which means we get an excellent, excellent rate. We just about issued all that we have authorized to issue. And just if I may, point of clarification in regards to Councilor Tello, with some statement that was made earlier, purpose, by statute, but we cannot issue a bond longer than the useful life of any item on there. So, for example, a roof may have a 20-year useful life. Our bond will go out in 20 years, by the way. So the roof, they have a longer useful life, but the bond can only go out in 20 years. Truck, they have a seven to 10-year useful life. So we can only bond out for seven or 10 years. If it's any other type of equipment, we have to go out for as long as the useful life of the equipment. So, you know, to say that we're going out beyond, we're still paying on this equipment longer than, you know, its useful life, or as long since we disposed of it, is not an accurate statement. So what we do is, when we're issuing these bonds, we are issuing serial bonds. So that's the point of clarification. We just smooth out the payments over a certain period of time. We were winding down all our, the amount that we're issuing will go out again this year for approximately $15 million, a band and some band, that'll be the long-term portion of just bonds, and we'll offer some bands for probably about $5 million or less, and that'll just about do it. All right, and that's why, if you notice in your bond packet, you notice that we peak out, as far as our percentage around, you know, next year.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Mr. Tello?
I'd just like to thank David for that explanation. You know, it's one thing to ask your descendants to pay for something that they're going to use, like a park or a mansion, a lake, or something like that, that 50 years, 75 years down, they're still using it. It's obviously a very different thing to ask them to pay for things they're no longer using and really dispose of and stuff like that.
Thank you, Mr. Tello. Further discussion? Say nothing, then, if there is.
Do you want to raise your question on this one? All right, you want to... All right, we're going to take a two-minute break.
We have a motion out on the floor, and I guess everybody... It was like nothing, so don't worry. I, you know, I just want to be clear that Mr. Shadisi moved... I'm just going to share, Mr. Perkins, during the discussion. Mr. Shadisi moved to divide the question. It is the sense of the Bible. I have to make a clarification of the question, Mr. Shadisi. In this case, we could have voted, we could have voted this, you know, unless you should have had, I just want to... You say, Mr. Perkins, you're making sure that's... I could rule, I could rule that's not easy to visible. And just for future reference, I feel the point, if the ordinance was divided that way, you would have to go back a little bit. So, just so...
It hasn't been tested that much, but the question about the goalie, they decided the question of...
So, maybe still many guys think there's been... Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Any other discussion related? Say nothing. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Ayes, raise your hand. I have item 14.
Water rates as of July 1st, 2012.
Question, Your Honor, Mrs. Daley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to recommend the national proposed amendments to go to ordinance in section 16-4 and section 16-3.
Second, by Mr. Severy, a discussion as we release the item 14. Say nothing, Mr. Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, in regard to minimums of use charges, I'm separate, I'm a public provider, I'm a council. I have a question to write that to...
What's that, Mr. Roy, you sit in the back, he's wearing pink? Come up here tonight.
David is a lot more...
Okay. My question is just the basis for, it's right or not necessarily, just to understand a little bit.
Your question, you're going to be the flat rate fee, is that really what your question is?
But for the minimum use charge, the flat rate fee, whatever.
Well, this rate structure has been in place for quite some time, so we do have a cost of service study, which we're presently embarking on, which we will look at rate design and rate structure. So I really, before I was formally set, set this up, so all I can say is, we can look into that, I think, the cost of service. But the purpose of a flat rate fee is that ultimately, you want all customers to be metered. So if someone isn't metered, you have to establish a flat rate fee. Mr. Tucker's question, I did hear, we can get into that.
Thank you, Your Honor. The way, it was explained to me at one time, not in this exact context, but similar to the public facility and stable context, is there's a certain cost to the delivery of the service, notwithstanding whether you use a gallon or 100 gallons. So to capture that cost, rather than having a different rate, let's say, on your electric bill, you have your service provider fee, or, I don't know, I'm unclear, and then you have your water, how much I should use. It explains to me it's something similar to that, you have to capture the cost of the infrastructure and the delivery, and then you add, you tack onto that the use. So it gets rolled in if you use more than the minimum charge, the flat rate, whatever you want to say. But if you don't use more than that, you pay that cost of the actual provision of the public facility.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, there's a minimum fixed fee.
That's myself a question. I'm just kidding. Just want to make sure that was understanding correctly.
Your explanation was correct. But the review that you kind of do, it's going to look at that, it's going to look at our rate structure. I mean, that may help answer a few of the questions.
You know, I'm just going to interject here, anytime we do these rate structure trees, they're never pretty. Those studies are never pretty, and when I present them to the capacity, I'm going to want to see what they're asking for because we are so historically low on sewer demand.
The reason I bring that up is we can look at that specific topic of how you establish a flat rate fee. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Tello.
I think directors do, Your Honor, if we're just about to do this, I'm looking at a $10 increase in section A, I'm looking at a $100 increase in section 1A, a $30 increase in section 1B, and maybe a $140 increase in section 1B. The reason I bring it up is we can put these strike throughs and whatnot. They left sometimes $1,000 in script, and they've done a strike through, so in some instances, it looks like we've gone from $750 to $1,700 or $1,800, but that's not the case. We're actually, these increases are, I don't want to say they're insubstantial, but they don't appear to be as large as they do at a cursory examination. So if I am correct on that, the first one's a $10 increase, the second one is a, it looks like a slightly less than $100 increase, the third one's about $30, and the fourth one's around $140, is that correct?
That's right. Thank you. Further discussion? Say nothing, then, if there is. All those in favor of item 14, signify by saying aye. Ayes. In the opposition? Mr. Perkins. And Mr. Skaz abstains. Madam Clerk, I have 50. Mr. Skaz, a lot. Sorry, Joe.
And 15 ordinance, water rates as of July 1st, 2012.
With your pleasure, counsel. Mr. Severy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the communication and adopt the ordinance establishing supportive non-need rates for the use of water, which may show me the effect for all bills rendered on or after July 1st, 2012, $179.22 per human.
Second, by Mr. Nagashet, any discussion related to this item? Say nothing, then, if there is. All those in favor, they signify by saying aye. Ayes. Opposition? Mr. Kerr, I abstain. Abstain respectfully, and then, Perkins, both now. Okay, Mr. President, talk on your first.
Your Honor, I'm looking at the way you're reading of the department reports, and all members have copies, and copies are on file, you know, in the assistant's office.
Second, by Mr. Nagashet, discussion of the department reports. Mrs. Daley.
I was just wondering if Mr. Stone can elaborate on what's going on at Pleasant Street?
Pleasant Street.
How we're handling it? Does it sound pleasant? Does it sound pleasant?
I was made aware of a situation at Pleasant Street Monday morning when I came into work. There were several, several cars blocking up the road, noise, a lot of people, even a complaint of a hot dog vendor who was being there. So I learned about this Monday morning when I come into work. So it's causing that stress, obviously, with the neighborhood. I haven't received complaints about this property in around two years, so not that it's new occurrence, but I have had a complaint about this property in two years, other than the occasional, parking, you know, smaller things. So the next question, I assume you might ask, is what can the unit do about it, what can the police department do about it? I'll be meeting with the property owner to discuss the burden that it's causing on the neighborhood, and figure out a way to make it not happen again. Certainly, you know, hot dog vendors, that's for sure. I'll be there this weekend as well to follow and check about, to make sure that it's not happening. Members of the council, the mayor, other department heads, other employees, several residents have asked me, you know, what can the city do about this, what can the union do about this, what can the police department do about this? There is an ordinance against this type of, this type of, you know, head-to-head. When there's, when there's illegal parking, you know, we can tow vehicles, we can ticket vehicles, you know, we can have vehicles move. If there's, there's noise ordinance, noises are too high, certainly, the police can be called and break the party up. But for continual head-to-heads at some of these residences, I'm sure we'd all love to be able to put an ordinance together, where we could limit this type of activity. I would encourage your group to help empower my department, police department, or any other departments that be, to figure out a way where we can curb this type of activity because it's causing a major quality of destruction to our many neighbors.
You said that this happened, Pleasant Street, two years ago?
Correct.
The last time I ever seen... Was it the same now? Was it the same?
It was the same.
And so what did you do two years ago that stopped it from happening, and now it's happening again?
We go there, we talk to the tenants, we talk to the property owners, and say, hey, come on, look around, you're causing disturbance to the neighborhood, neighbors are complaining, they're not happy with you. Many property owners and tenants are respectful of that, and many just simply don't care.
One of the houses in question, Mrs. Daley, are five pleasant, seven pleasant. I will tell you that one of the best strategies we've used is get ahold of a landlord, call the landlord in the city law. Right. Sit down with him, and kind of go over the, if you're not aware, or if you go to break the tenants, sometimes there's a language challenge, sometimes folks are transient, they may not live there in a couple months. They're going to the landlord to say, look, I noticed a new corner. The other piece is, that's why I came to you guys with that ordinance, and I want to deep up a little bit. I think it's seven, it's in significant disrepair, there's grass overgrown, it's house-qualified, so part of this would be, you know, but there's a landlord collecting a rent for these folks every month, so obviously, they've got to put some money back in that property. So I'm sure Mr. Stone would also point on being the landlord.
One more question. So when they called, they called up your message on Sunday? The resident called not a message on Sunday, and there was nobody around to respond on Sundays?
We did, actually. I got an email on Sunday as well, according to Mr. Stone. She had your cell phone number, so she called you. Cruiser did go out there, but they didn't report the kind of activity that was being reported to us. Now, it could have just been that they got there too late and everybody had already left, but we did send a police cruiser out there.
And police, police officer also did, at that time, he wasn't there, he was on the car, but again, cars were, at that time, three were parked, and there really wasn't much else. The officer did...
I know if there's cars parked on the street, that police officers can ticket that for blocking the streets, because I know I'm in business, and if my truck, if my truck is on the street, I will get a ticket or be asked to hire police officers for that sort of, for being there for tenants. So I mean, there's a lot of things already on the books that we can use, I think, to curtail this activity.
I think in this case, the cop just got there too late. I think by the time we responded, most people had done, so there were a few cars leaving parked, you'd be driving up and down, we could get a fire truck through, I think we just missed it, or I think we got to put this on the radar for the next couple weeks.
Yeah, everybody should write to you in the comments.
Absolutely. Respectfully. Mr. Hall?
I can see how a game in yard one, if this becomes a weekly thing, does it...
Yeah, we went down there. I ended up being opposed about that for about three hours, so here's what I can tell you, is that the most effective tool we found is to meet directly with the owner of the house. We haven't done that yet here, and then escalate our enforcement, right? So I think we have enough tools in our toolbox now to get on top of this. Last time we had a major outbreak of these kinds of recurring group activities, we were able to work with the community, to work with the property owners, to get most of them shut down. There were maybe two at the end that we couldn't, we just wouldn't listen to anybody. We turned those over to the chief, the chief put together a mini task force, and we got them shut down. Not to say that you can't enjoy your property, you can, but if you can't enjoy your property, that's just like everybody else's finances. So, Mr. Seaberry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to publicly recognize Leo Knell and his department. He came to my neighborhood with some issues that he was had, and I think several times to my knowledge, through his guidance, that they would rectify the situation that I could have gone completely out of hand, and so I just wanted to thank you publicly. Thanks so much, Leo.
Thank you. Mr. Seaberry, the discussion with the Department reports. Mr. Scott.
Your Honor, thank you. If I could just slightly move along track, I just want to say thank you to the council for the great job they did, and meetings were attended almost flawlessly, and we appreciate that. And I want to just thank David, the mayor, David's staff for tremendous job and what they do, what they can do for the service. Pretty easy to ask for radar contributions, but I think it was a significant possibility to have.
Any other discussions in the Department reports? I'll try your minds. All in favor of the signature, say aye. I'm checking motion carries unanimously. We have, um... Who want to go back and get it? Do you want to clarify? We just want to clarify that Mr. Seaberry's motion, it was to amend, um, a whole series of the code because the rates are affected throughout the code, so, Mr. Seaberry, can you just read this off, please?
It's to clarify that Mr. Seaberry's motion referenced one section or four more. It should all be captured, you know, tweeted out, the research ordinance.
Okay. If I understand correctly, that's one, two, lateral. Alls you're doing is you're, in addition to amending the first... What I already said, the order before. In addition, I amended. In addition to my pre-stated motion, I'd also like to include the approval of codes 21-46, 21-47, 21-48. Okay, Department reports have been accepted. We've got two add-on items, so item, how would be, enter ten motions to add on, Mr. Scott. I'd like to make a motion at this time that we add item number 17 as an add-on, which is appointment of independent auditors, and item number 18, which we will retire into executive session for the purposes of discussion of the 13 acres of real property. Seconded, I'm seconded. All is clear, item 17 is a appointment of independent auditors. And item 18, which is a discussion of acquisition of sale of real property, 13 acres on Old East Fair Road, signature, say aye. Aye. In the opposition, this right has been added. Just before we go to 17, for the executive session, Mr. Volpe, I need you to stay. Can you stay for the executive session, please? Mr. Tamala, can you stay? Mr. Shepherd, your legal staff, Mr. St. Valer, and actually, I'm gonna need Mr. Perkins as well. In the executive session, you can go. And Mr.? I think we're... Any, okay, I have a second.
Appointment of independent auditors. Your Honor, Paul Markwell from David St. Valer, Director of Finance. Once again, it is time for the City of Danbury to consider the appointment of these auditors to perform the city audit for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2012. Previously, the city signed a contract with McGadri and Holden to perform the audit for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2010, with the option exercisable by the city of auditing its financial statement for each of the four subsequent fiscal years. McGadri and Holden has performed the independent audit slash accounting services for the city over the last 12 years and has done an outstanding job. As such, the city council is respectfully requested to approve the reappointment of McGadri and Holden as the city independent auditors for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2012, as required by the city charter and the state standards. Please feel free to contact me should you require any additional information.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Leavy?
Your Honor, I make a motion that we rescind the communication, thinking the option of renewal as outlined in the communication of appointment of independent auditors.
Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All in favor, signature, say aye. Aye. Or opposed, signature, say aye. We're going with the executive session at this point. Department, say aye, call up the hall. I should say no, but I think it's the bill.